We just moved here a few months back from New York, so we're new to the state, new to the city.
I'm just excited to, you know, meet different people in the community. I would really like to get involved. The public sector exists for the people, and if you're not engaging with the public, if you're not getting their...
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, August 16th, 2017 Reno City Planning Commission, and we will begin our agenda with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you could join Commissioner Johnson in leading us this evening.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Michelle, can I get roll call, please?
Mark Johnson?
Here.
Ed Hawkins?
Here.
John Marshall? Paula Levis?
Here.
Kevin Weiskie is absent. Peter Gower?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is public comment, and this item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment, and I do have one request to speak card. Just a reminder, if you would like to make a public comment this evening, if you could fill one of these out so we can get your information, and each person will have three minutes. When you get to the podium, if you could just say your name, we'd appreciate that, and we will begin with Danny Kleas.
Can I get the overhead?
There's no audio.
Is there audio? No?
No.
Anyways, my name is Danny Kleas. This is about the Prado Ranch development. You can barely see it, but all that water, that's where they want to stick it. Now they fill in that, it floods my house again. A part of this that you didn't see was when I first started it, where my house was underwater. I don't want to see that happen ever again. Between the city and the county, y'all have a responsibility of fixing this problem. There needs to be a study out there so this never happens ever again. My house still isn't fixed, my insurance still won't pay for anything, flood insurance or home insurance. I pay them both. That's disgusting. See where the big thing of water is, right in here? That's where they want to rezone it to build warehouses. See this other section over here? That's where they want to build a whole bunch of suburb. Where's that water going to go next time it rains? It's going to go right back in my house. They want to fill that in with dirt. That's not right. When it comes to the Prado Ranch, I hope you guys shut it down again. It's already been denied once. There's no way that that lake can support any more water. That's why that field is open. That's why other homes aren't built around there. All the development that's going on around Lemon Valley is causing this. We already established it wasn't a wet winter. It wasn't a record winter until after March. It's not right. My house shouldn't get flooded just because somebody wants to build a warehouse. Somebody wants to build 4,000 homes, 5,000 homes. Nobody's done a study out there since 1968. Get one done before any more building's done out there. It's not right. I shouldn't have to worry, this year I'm going to have to worry again, if my house is going to be underwater again. Because that has only gone down roughly a little bit over a foot. Where's this winter's water going to go? You think that water's going to disappear so the next winter? All that water can go in that lake? That's not right. Do a study out there, quit your building. I shouldn't have to worry about my house going underwater because of somebody's irresponsibility. My neighbors and I, we all think the same. We're worried about this winter. There's people still not in their homes because of this mess that have never been flooded in 30, 40 years. What's the problem? Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment for a general public comment? We'll have separate public comment for each of the agenda items. Seeing none, Michelle, do you have any other public comment cards for this one?
No, I do not.
Okay, can I close public comment and move down our agenda to approval of the minutes? We have our June 29th, 2017 minutes. Commissioners, did you have a chance to review those? Any changes? If not, I'll be looking for a motion. Let's find out. Commissioner Hawkins, you want to make a motion?
I do.
Okay.
I want to accept the minutes the way they're written.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Marshall is ready at a second?
No, I have to abstain because I wasn't there.
He has to abstain, so we do not have enough votes to make a motion to approve that. Approve it? No. Four to approve? Okay, let's find out then. Got a motion? How about a second?
I have to abstain.
Commissioner Johnson has to abstain as well, so that gets us down to three. Okay. We will pass on those for lack of a quorum that was there to approve the minutes.
Can we ask legal? Because these minutes... I'm sorry, this is Michelle. Mark Johnson and Troy Schneider were both absent at that meeting, and John Marshall wasn't there. So even if Kevin was here, are we going to have a quorum for those minutes to be passed at the next meeting?
Direct that question to legal.
Let's bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay. We'll defer approval of the June 29th minutes to our next meeting. So we'll move down to item number five then, City Council Liaison Reports. CNN?
I do not have any information tonight from the City Council Liaison.
Okay, thank you. So moving down to our public hearing portion of our agenda, we do have a few things that are going to move around. For items 6.3, that's LDC 17-0064 FJM Grading, and 6.4, LDC 17-00061 Meridian 120 South, 6.5, Text Amendment 17-00005 Mortenson-Garson Overlay, and item 6.6, LDC 17-0052 Meridian 120 Zone Change. Those four items are going to move up to the front of the agenda. We will still have public comment on those items, but the applicant and staff applicant is going to request a continuance on each of those items. So we'll hear public comment. Well, as a commission, make a motion, or I'll ask for a motion from the commissioners on the continuance for those four items, and then we will continue on with our agenda with 6.1 and 6.2 after those items. Commissioners, clear on that direction? Staff, okay with that? Okay, so we will move then down the agenda and start with item 6.3, and if we could just get a brief explanation from either staff or the applicant, where we stand. Jeff, welcome.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Jeff Borcard, Associate Planner for the Record. With regards to this item, there is a couple items that came up in discussions with adjacent property owners that we're still working through with the applicant, and so this will come back before you. More than likely, the request is to come to, if you can, continue to date certain to the September 6th meeting. That would be what the applicant's preference is, and we will work through all those issues prior to that date.
Okay, excellent. Applicant want to add anything, or did that cover it? You don't have to.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Reilith-Rucon, Design Group, representing FG Management Company. Yeah, we're in agreeance with Jeff and would like to continue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we're going to open public comment for the item, and Michelle, do you have any public comment cards for this item? This is 6.3, 00064.
No, I do not.
Okay, anyone wishing to make a comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the commission for, and I request a motion to continue date certain to September 6th.
Commissioner Johnson, I will move that in the case of LDC 17-00064 FJM Grading, that we postpone that to date certain September 6th.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Mr. Hawkins, second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, see you back on the 6th. So the next item that we will hear is LDC 17-00061 Meridian 120 South Village 1 and 2, and if I could get similar presentation from staff just on the status of the request for the continuance, CNN?
Absolutely. So for this item, item 6.4 as well as 6.5 and 6.6, we did have a noticing error, and at this point in time to move forward, what we need to do is correct that noticing error and hence the continuance to a new date.
Okay. And it's my understanding the date certain on that, the request is the 6th as well?
That is correct.
Okay. So at this point, again, I'm going to open public comment for the item, and this is specifically for LDC 17-00061 for the villages, and I'll open it up. And the first comment card I have is from Fletcher Gilson. If you'd come forward, if, understanding that it's continued, if you'd like to, you know, reserve your comment for the next meeting, that's fine. If you want to make it now, that's fine too.
I'd like to make it now. One of the things is, we're very unsure what's going on. We got this much information.
If you just grab the microphone there.
We received this yesterday. I mean, that's really pretty poor. One of the things I want to talk about is the water issues out there. We basically in our previous meetings have had meetings with the engineering, state engineers on the water, and basically they stated that the wells they had tested in the area were okay. I beg to differ with that. I have a well testing equipment, and I've tested several wells in the area when we were in this drought situation. Mr. Belli, who has an ag well out there, had the thing totally dry up. State engineer stated that everything was okay and that there's plenty of water here. Part of the issues are that nothing's being irrigated out there anymore, so none of that water on previous studies can be accounted for because it's not there. It's not going back into the ground. And everything that's being built out there now, they're taking out with, it's going back into town. It's not going into the ground, and it's really affecting our aquifer. And for the state engineers to say that it's not, I just consider that really a lie. And promoting something that's not there. We've done this in other areas at Montreal, and it's been a disaster. There's been lawsuits out there. It dried everybody up. One of the things I don't understand is why we don't follow the master plan. The master plan states that Tomaw will be the one out there doing this, and that they will control the wells and whatever to control the area, and I think they do a great job. I don't understand why we're not using them and not following the master plan. We seem to dump that in favor of contractors or whoever to save them money and not do the thing right. I'm not negative on growth, I'm just negative on the way we do it. Because I think we need to do it right to preserve the quality in the area. The other thing I want to get into is the drainage in the area. We've heard it's going to go back down to the, basically the east side and go through where it's going now. Well, in this last flood, we had houses flooded, we had, you know, the drainage totally got overrun, and I think as a planning commission, this has been ignored several times. The subdivision going in on the south side of Southampton right now is all going to go down into the Steamboat Ditch. Well, it cost the city $177,000 to put that ditch back, and it flooded four houses, and here we are approving another subdivision to go right back into that drainage. I'd hate to see that happen in Belli Ranch. The other thing is, is we all went to meetings and got the zoning preserved at one acre, and we basically just, I don't, you know, we're just going back against it. That was supposed to be permanent, and I don't know how it got changed. I don't think it should be changed. We've got enough issues out there with the water and different things, and the more homes we put in, again, all this water is going back through the sewer and out of the area and being pumped out of the ground. So that's a big issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, request to speak form I have is from, looks like M.L. Belly? Belli?
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a clarifying question that might be helpful to the folks who are coming up to testify?
Yes.
Will they be allowed to testify again when it's heard on September 6th, or this is their only opportunity?
Absolutely. No, that's a good point, and you have the opportunity to make a public comment tonight. We'll have a public hearing again if it's continued to September 6th, so that's why...
But if they, if they give their comment tonight, can they give it again on the 6th, or this is their only opportunity? I mean, excuse me, not only opportunity, if they give it now, will they be precluded from doing it then? Because I think it'd be, for me at least, it would be more useful to have that comment at the time we're considering the matter than tonight. But if they're going to be allowed to give it again, then we'll hear it again.
Absolutely. For the record, CNN, read. Public comment will be taken at each time this item is heard, so we have it open tonight. We will not be taking any action. We'll be looking to continue, but taking public comment. Everyone that's here this evening, and others can certainly come out when the item is heard again, provide additional public comments. So the idea is to have the most opportunities to hear public comment from the people that would like to do so.
Okay, my name's Lawrence Belli. I'm an 86-year-old native out there. Other than two years of the, in the service, I've been there my whole entire life. And I was hoping, and I don't know exactly what's going on because we just got some notice lately. I thought the developers would be here to explain this to us so that I wouldn't be talking about something maybe not necessarily having to do with the case. Number one, though, we were told years ago, we thought it was in perpetuity, that it was going to remain one acre. At that time, we got together with some negotiations with Bob Cachella, who owned it, and it was supposed to remain one acres. And number two, of course, we're, it's a lot of repeat. Like I say, we're considering, worried about the well situation. Like I say, we're considering, worried about the well situation. They're taking water from our aquifer, which is a zone out there, taking it, transporting it to Reno through the sewage, which I, I don't think the water engineers should really allow them as much water as they're asking for. Number three, the Old Hanson Ranch, which joins the Blue Heron subdivision, which we're talking about. Most of that water was sold off years ago and went into Reno, used in some of the casinos. So to give them additional water now, groundwater, is like double dipping. Some of that water came into Reno, some of it's used there in the Blue Heron for irrigation. And we've had some, some pretty big, every, every, we want, we'd like to see the thing being used by your purveyor, taken care of by Tomah. At least they go in there and check everything out, the qualities, the quantities and everything. If not, there's been several in the area and I think in the entire Reno area, where these private waterworks have gone defunct. At that time, the developers walked from them, the guys that are stuck with having to deal with Tomah to get their water and everything are, are paying for it themselves. So, but anyhow, pretty much, and then the drainage, I don't know what. I heard that they were going to do some drainage changing. One of the items has something to do with drainage. And I'm hoping they're not thinking about taking some drainage. It's been a problem there forever. Moving it over to the east where there's a big draw which gets filled the capacity, the water runs over down on Warrior Lane. Every time we have a flood, plus it overflows and goes into the Belli Ranch and everything. If they were to change anything at all on that drainage, it'd be nothing but a big problem and criminal. It's, it would be a problem forever. The, the thing to take care of the drainage right in the middle of this project would be, they need some bigger culverts in the county. They've got some small culverts on Warrior Lane and the one below. And it backs up and then it, it affects two or three of the houses in there every time. So if these developers are going to do it right, they should go with the storm drain. Storm drain four to six foot and take it down into the highway, which the highway is just spend a pile of money redoing this, this situation. But anyhow, I just wish I knew, I had something here to know exactly what they're asking for, so I knew what I was talking about.
Okay.
I thank you.
And the advantage of the extra time is to have more time to read the staff report, I guess. So, next public comment card I have is from Deanne Ratcliffe.
Sorry. Hello, Deanne Ratcliffe. Thank you all for serving on the, on Planning Commission, by the way. I live on Warrior Lane and was actually the chairperson of the Verdi Assistant Advisory Board when this came through. I grabbed out my handy overlay and I guess overall for all these projects, I'm horrified that any of the things that we, we had a group that worked incredibly long, put in a lot of dedication, that any of those things could be changed. Again, I went through every step of the process, worked intensely with the developers and lots of other people to make sure that the development was what was going to be appropriate. So I actually live at Warrior and I was looking in here, I remember very clearly the, um, one acre edge matching. So I'm horrified to know that that changed. And honestly, until these gentlemen were speaking, I had no idea. So again, huge opportunity because I would love to have an acre lot that backs up to my house. I definitely have the same water concerns. My well is right around a hundred feet, feet deep. So again, those same concerns, especially because our drought was significant. The other concerns I have are regarding the flooding from the steamboat. So my house is fortunate that I am the first house with a large irrigation pond that comes through into my property. So how the Blue Heron subdivision is irrigated is it comes through my pond, goes through a series of streams on my property and trucks out through the neighborhood. So we had flooding at my property today, or excuse me, twice during this past winter. And the sandbag station, for one, for Washoe County was right at the edge of our street where we just went down to grab sandbags. And many of our neighbors did because we had flooding. We had flooding all on Warrior Lane that the county worked on fixing before. But the field behind our house has just massive water issues. I can't imagine what that would do and especially putting seventy-eight homes back in such a small area. Again, going to my handbook here, we had sixteen acres of large lot residential, so one acre. And then twenty-six of the SF nine thousand. So again, I really had no idea when I spent all this time back in October of two thousand and three and two thousand and four, those are the years that we worked on it, that there would be any changes to this. Really, I'm just, I'm horrified that that could change. Thank you very much.
You. Uh, next comment card I have is from Ed Coffer.
Thank you all, I appreciate everything that you do for the city. I appreciate the opportunity to express to you the situation that is grossly affecting Verdi.
Ed, can you just confirm your name?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you just confirm your name?
Ed Coffer.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've lived in Verdi for probably twenty years. This project that you have designated as zero zero six one surrounds my property on two sides. Approximately sometime ago, I'm going to say eight or nine years ago, when Cabela's wanted to develop their property, there was a meeting that took place in my front yard with Mr. Belli, Mayor Bob Kachell, myself and another gentleman. We made an agreement that we would do everything possible to support the Cabela development, provided the zoning remained one to the acre. Now we see that they want to change it to nine thousand square foot lots. And I've received no packet of information, so I, I'm not sure exactly how many of those lots they want to change to nine thousand square feet. But we had an agreement with Bob Kachell that they would remain one acre lots in perpetuity. So I, I've attempted to reach Mr. Kachell, unfortunately I was unable to do that. But I will be very happy to follow up. And everyone in Verdi supports development. We don't support high density in a rural environment. We live out there because we want some space around us. If you put nine thousand square foot lots together, you're creating a real problem from the standpoint of drainage, ingress and egress because there's only one way in and one way out. It's a fire hazard and on top of that, we had the understanding with the mayor of Reno, it would remain one to the acre. So I thank you all for your time. I'm also speaking for my wife, so you don't need to take any more time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Next request to speak form I have is from Deborah Horton.
I tried to prepare something written that I could kind of read quickly so that I don't take too much of your time. I've lived at Belli Ranch for twenty-nine years now.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry?
State your name for the record.
My name is Deborah Horton.
Thank you.
Um, I have several other issues, but I'll start with I, the idea of annexation. It seems to me that, that annexation is actually before the wrong political body because annexation has to occur from the county to the city. And here you are, city council making decisions about the county property. So I'm, I'm really quite concerned about that because the annexation should happen first before any development is considered. This property is clearly in the county, not in the city, and is surrounded by developments to the north and the east. And as Mr. Coffer said, also then to the south, that have one acre minimum lots, up to seventeen acres. As such, this area since the early nineteen eighties has had the distinction of rural suburban and should remain such. Please, no special use permits or zoning or land use designation changes just for this applicant using the phony phrases of Reno sphere of influence, Reno I eighty corridor or Truckee River corridor. Just how wide is a corridor? Is it a foot? Is it thirty feet? Is it a hundred feet? Is it a mile? Is it anything you want to annex? Everybody's really troubled because things keep changing. We don't want urban sprawl. As Ed said, we moved out there to have land around us and be able to have livestock and to be able to irrigate. If the Reno City Council and Mayor really get to make decisions in the county and then call them Reno, then residents in Verdi Township, Mogul, Blue Heron and Belli Ranch should be able to vote for you folks and the city and the mayor. You are denying us our voter rights in a supposed representative democracy, committing voter suppression, gerrymandering, voter fraud and taxation without representation. The added state secretary of state has also been alerted. Additionally, in two thousand and nine, the city of Reno, Washoe County and Washoe County entered into an illegal contract with a steamboat ditch company to use the steamboat and other dishes, ditches for flood abatement to help protect Reno, thereby flooding our county properties instead, which happened this last year. The easement is not a public easement, nor part of a public trail network. Rather, it is an exclusive easement on hundreds of private properties solely for access to the steamboat ditch company for maintenance of their ditch. All of this proposed subdivision before you is downhill from the steamboat ditch. The easement and, the easement actually is a levy that's supposed to protect our properties. In twenty-eight years living at Belli Ranch, I have been flooded at least a dozen times. My house, my barn, my garage, my patio, my dog run, my backyard, my driveway, east and west of the house. And the steamboat ditch has never maintained nor repaired breaches that have threatened my property. Believe me when I tell you, this steamboat ditch has no intentions of protecting this new proposed development either. We were told Washoe County Public Works would take care of things because of this, this illegal contract and they're begging off too. We don't want the developer's proposed undergrain storm drain system to tie into existing ditches as is stated in this paper that Fletcher talked about.
Deborah, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. We don't want any of our, any of their water adding to the flooding that occurred this year. And if you approve these plans, you're only adding to the problem. Previous reports admit that they know the ditch will fail. So what agency will protect downstream homeowners? Who's responsible for financial damages? Do you even have the legal right to do this?
Deborah, I'm going to have to ask you to stop there just out of respect for.
But there are lots of issues that it's not just a, shouldn't be just a slam dunk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is the last request to speak form I have for this item. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Again, recognizing that we bring, when we bring this back likely September sixth, that there will be another opportunity to provide comment as Commissioner Marshall indicated. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments, bring it back to the commission and ask for discussion and if there is none, a motion to continue date certain to September sixth.
No discussion. So Commissioner Johnson, I will move that in the case of LDC one seven dash zero 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 six one, Meridian one twenty South Village one and two, that we postpone this date certain to September sixth.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Marshall. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that item will be continued date certain to September sixth. So we will move on then to our next item, which is related to six four. This item is six five, it's a text amendment seventeen dash zero 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 five. This is for the Mortenson Garson overlay planning area. Again, due to the noticing error, it would be looking for a continuance date certain to September sixth. I do have a couple comment cards on this one, so I'm going to open it up. And the first one I have is from Deanne Ratcliffe. Actually have two from Deanne.
Thank you again, I'll be brief. So Deanne Ratcliffe, I would like to say two things. I've lived in Verdi forty-three of my forty-six years, so really the majority of my life. I have a lot of passion for it and I think that we just need to be very thoughtful in what we develop and how we, again, plan in Verdi. And the second request I have is for the developer and I know the developer representative is here tonight. That's apparently negative? No? Okay. The request I had, or maybe for our Reno city staff, is to provide the requested documents and have a copy of the Verdi library. I tried to get stuff online, I was not able to. When I was the chairperson for the advisory board, we commonly requested copies be available at our community library for people to review and to be informed on. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. We can make that happen. So those are all the comment cards I have for that item. There's no other public comments, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the commission and look for a motion to continue this item date certain to September sixth. Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Marshall? Do I have a second? Commissioner Olivas? Okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. And the last one, six six, which is LDC seventeen dash zero zero, zero five two Meridian one twenty zone change. Again, associated with the overall items here and due to the noticing error, looking for continuance. I will open public comment on this item. Do not have any request to speak forms. Michelle, do you have any?
No, I do not.
Okay. Anyone wishing to make a comment on the zone change? Okay, I will close public comments, bring it back to the commission and ask for a motion to continue date certain to September sixth.
Commissioner Johnson, I will motion to continue LDC one seven dash, oops, I have the wrong number up, zero 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 six. Oh, excuse me, zero 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 five two Meridian one twenty zone change to date certain September sixth.
Okay, thank you, have a motion?
Commissioner Olivas, I'll second.
And a second? Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. So we will see you back here on September sixth. I appreciate, the commission does appreciate the comments tonight and look forward to further discussion when we hear the item September sixth. So we certainly welcome everyone back at that time. So with that, we are going to move on then on our agenda to item six point one, which is case number LDC seventeen dash zero 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 six six Grace Church twelve twenty Rob Drive. And we'll begin with a presentation from the applicant's representative.
Good evening, Chairman Gower and members of the commission. For the record, Angela Fuess with Lumison Associates here today on behalf of Grace Church. The request before you today is a special use permit for three separate items. One is to add a new building, which would be a children's center, about fifty-four hundred square feet in size. The second request is to add more seats in the existing worship center. That's about two hundred and forty-four new seats. And the third request is to add a new parking lot to add a hundred and three parking spaces. The Grace Church is an existing church that's been around since the late nineties. It's located east of Rob Drive and south of Simon's Drive. And it's, it's sandwiched really in between an elementary school to the east and a park to the west and single family development to the north and the south. To the right here, we have a landscape plan. And I tried to call out specifically the two areas that are up for discussion tonight. So on the north is the new parking lot. And if you, if you drove by the site, you'll see that the majority of this area is already developed. And then there's a hill and above that hill is the area where we're talking about adding a new parking lot. So that parking lot will add a hundred and three new parking spaces. Back in two thousand and five, when this, this church went through a special use permit, they requested to turn this area into a parking lot. At that time, they did not have the funds or the, the abilities at that time to actually construct the parking lot. So the special use permit for that parking lot expired. So at that time, it was approved, so this is coming back and putting in what initially had been approved. On the south side of the site is the new kids' building. And this is an area that for the last few years has been vacant. But prior to that, there was a modular that was used as a building. It was a temporary modular that was there for several years. Again, as the church has grown and expanded, their needs have changed. So now they're at the point where they're ready, financially ready as well and are planning to put in a permanent building which will be used as a kids' center so that during Sunday service, they actually have a separate area where the kids can go. Pictures on the left gives you a view of exactly what we're talking about. So you can see there, that top left picture is the north parking lot that is. So you can see there, that top left picture is the north parking lot that is up for proposal today. And the bottom picture is the existing location of where that modular had been for several years. Once that modular went away, the site was vacant, and it's a grassy area. And that will be turned into the permanent building location. Here is a circulation plan to give you an idea of how that northern parking lot will function. There is one point of access, and that is off of Rob Drive. I do wanna make a, just a note of interest. When this parking lot came before the plan commission back in 2005, there were two points of access. So one was off Rob Drive, and the second was to the north off Simon's Drive. Because of the impacts to the residential dwelling unit surrounding Simon's Drive, we purposely did not include that second access as part of the special use permit. So there's one way to get in, and that's on Rob Drive. We've added on the very east side, a, I would call it more of an internal connection, which is going to be gated and used just internally. So when we have staff, this is generally where staff's gonna park. We have big events where there's a lot of people parking here, we'll have a shuttle, a Grace Church shuttle, that can transport people from the north parking lot to the building. The, the parking needs for Grace Church is definitely something they've been dealing with for the last few years. They currently shuttle people from the McQueen High School parking lot every Sunday. So there's a definite need for more parking. If we, if we look in terms of how many parking spaces are required, it's, it's about 300, over 300 spaces are required. What we're proposing will get us a little over 500 spaces. So in terms of what the code requires, based on what the needs are, this is fulfilling that gap. And anytime you add more parking than what the code requires, you do have to add more landscaping. This site requires about 20% landscaping, they have about 32% landscaping. So there's a significant amount of landscaping that's gone into this overall site, as well as, as to screening the parking area from those residents to the east. Another comment that we, we heard from one of the neighbors had to do with concerns over lighting. So I did wanna bring up a photometric plan, just to give you an idea of what the northern parking lot lighting plan will look like. All of the light poles are 25 feet tall. The rest of the church has light poles at 35 feet tall. So these are significantly reduced. And then anything that's within 100 feet of residence has to go down to 15 feet. We don't have any lighting proposed within 100 feet. I think our closest light pole is about 140 feet from residential structures. And keep in mind, per standard code, all those light poles have to be shielded and pointing downwards, so that there's no spill over light going across the property lines. We are in agreement with all of the conditions of approval, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Angela, thank you very much. From here, we'll turn it over to staff for presentation.
Great. Thank you, good evening. Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner, for the record. The applicant did a great job of outlining the request before you this evening. In addition to that, I did want to let you know that the NAB had provided some comments that were related to circulation for the site, as well as drainage. Those items have been incorporated into the analysis of the staff report, and recommendations are based in part on those comments. Additionally, I did receive about three phone calls or emails from residents that neighbor the existing Grace Church site. Several of the neighbors located on that northeast portion of the site did have some comments that were related to lighting, dust control, and also activities that may take place on the site during hours where Grace Church is not actually operating. As far as, as far as dust control concerns are related to the site, this site, as with all permitted sites, would be required to comply with the dust control measures that are established by Washoe County Air Quality Management. The applicant's representative went over the light conditions that are included in Exhibit A of your packet. And with regard to the third item, we did speak with the applicant about the concerns related to primarily skateboarder activity on the site during the evenings. Some of the concerns raised were that new proposed driveway to the east may attract additional activity to the site for skateboarders. Additionally, they happened to, you know, from comments received by the public, they happened to visit the site late into the evening, make noise and things like that. So in speaking with the applicant, we drafted this condition that would require Grace Church to establish a security plan that would include providing the adjacent or budding neighbors with a point of contact where if they see activity or hear activity that is concerning, they can contact the church and, and have that addressed. With the addition of condition number 13, staff can make all the findings, and we're recommending approval of the request. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Heather, thank you very much. We'll get back to you on the questions at this point. Before we get to any public comments, I'm gonna ask the commissioners for disclosures. And I will start with Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site and I received email.
Commissioner Hawkins visited the site, one email, and talked with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Johnson, I received an email and visited the site.
Commissioner Gower, I visited the site, received emails, and I do have family members who are affiliated with Grace Church. There it goes.
I've, I guess I received an email, and that's it. I've been by the site many times, but I'm not certain if that's a need for disclosure.
Familiar with the site. Okay. Sounds good. At this point, I will open public comment. I do not have any public comment cards, Michelle, do you have any?
No, I do not.
Okay. If anyone would like to come forward and make a comment, we'd certainly welcome that at this point. Seeing nobody rushing forward, I'm going to close public comment, and I will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Who'd like to kick us off? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
Questions, I should say, sorry.
Questions first, thanks. Heather, start, question for you. As far as the parking goes, the applicant indicated that we are overparked, based on code, and offsetting that with landscaping. I guess my question is, in looking at the proposed parking area, one thing that I see between the additional parking and looking at the added seats in the worship center and the childcare, the added parking that's being in there, none of that's accessible parking? So in the overall parking plan, do, does the, you know, addition of this parking and the addition over that, do we still meet code with respect to accessible parking, accessible routes to all of the facilities?
Thank you. Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner, for the record. As far as the accessible parking requirements, those are based on the number of overall parking required for the site, so we may find that additional accessible parking would be required. Those will be required to be located close in proximity to the building entrances to comply with the ADA standards.
Okay. And that's something that would be addressed at the building permit stage, when everything comes in? They would be looking at the overall site as a part of the permit for this?
Yes, that's correct.
And then just a secondary question. The applicant mentioned that there's only one entrance in and out of the parking area. Based on that information, they also indicated that there was no traffic study required as a result of that. Is that correct? And is there any issues from staff's side with respect to the one entrance that we've got into the parking lot there?
So the, the engineers did find that there is not a traffic study required just based on the times that the church is typically open, those are non-peak hours. And, and Rob Drive has sufficient capacity to accommodate the site without triggering any additional review. With regard to the east driveway, this plan has been designed to where folks will enter into that north parking lot from Rob Drive and take a shuttle potentially down to the site, or walk down the stairs that are kind of central to the, to the parking lot area there. Any vehicles that find that maybe that space is, is full and would like to locate to the south parking lot would need to access that from Rob Drive. But with the minimal numbers that that is going to generate, it's not gonna, we don't anticipate that it would be, cause a problem on the site.
So is the entrance to the north parking lot a full traffic, right in, left in, right out, left out?
Yes, that's correct. And I think the staff report did identify that a left turn arrow would need to be added to the, the Rob Drive turn lane in order to meet requirements for, for traffic.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions right now, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for Angela Foose. Your landscape map shows deciduous trees that are existing. What's gonna be the mix around the new portion of the parking lot?
We are adding a couple areas. We're adding trees on the east side to help buffer that, that new access route on, on the east side. And then we're adding a mix of both deciduous and coniferous on that side, as well as, it's about a half an acre between the two parking lots, that's the sloped area. So we are adding an additional, gosh, off the top of my head, I can't think of the number. But it's a mix of both types of trees, deciduous and coniferous.
We're gonna stay away from the columnar trees?
We can, yes. And maybe just one more thing I wanted to add to on the traffic. So there are three services on Sundays. You know, your 9:00, your 11:00, and your 6:00 PM. The 11:00 is really the busy one. They do have, within Grace Church, about 10 to 12 people that are on traffic duty during each of these services. So they help to kind of manage traffic coming in and out so that we don't have roadblocks on Rob Drive. So that is something that they are currently doing, and they will definitely expand that with the new north parking lot coming in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Marshall?
I guess this is a question for staff. So this, this is substantially overparked in terms of the calculated demand in the staff report. Is there, does that indicate to you that there's, that some of these, like worship center or childcare, children's center, the per-unit or per-area requirement are, are these low? Or it's just a desire upon the church to have a lot more parking?
So in this case, the church has a lot of members. And so as a result, currently, they are actually shuttling from off-site onto the property. So I, I don't think there's a question of whether our standards are adequate. I think just in this particular case, the church has seen a need for additional parking.
And I'd like to clarify one of your answers to Commissioner Johnson, and that is, you, you said that they may need to add parking if some of the uphill, the new parking lot is not accessible to the lower uses? Is that, did I get that right?
No, thank you for your question. So the, the parking lot on the north side is, does not have any accessible spaces. That is accessed primarily from stairs or from a shuttle. In answering Commissioner Johnson's question, if the overall number of parking spaces provided on the site would result in additional accessible parking spaces required, those spaces will be located adjacent to the buildings.
So you would convert some of the lower spaces to accessible spaces?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Can I ask Ms. Foose some questions, please? Maybe I'm off-base here, but can you talk to me through this overparking situation? Maybe I'm, just my background, but shouldn't, I know we, we treat these parking as minimums, not maximums. But from a planning perspective, why should we be encouraging significantly more parking spaces than, than, I assume these come out of some engineer's handbook or something as to the appropriate number of spaces per use, or square footage, or units, or whatever? Can you talk me through that issue?
Sure. So the, the parking standard's based on the number of seats. The, the bulk of the parking comes from the worship center. So knowing how many seats we have, you can equate that to how many cars hypothetically you think you should have. And that's pretty much what the code parking requirements are. The challenge is, is that with churches, it, it sometimes varies. So you could have a congregation with a lot of big families, and so you may have one car, and that car may have six children. So how do you accommodate that? In, in this case, as the church has grown, their congregation has grown, and their, their parking needs have definitely grown. So rather than having parking on the residential streets or anywhere that would impact the neighbors, they've tried to accommodate that, that need by either providing parking within their, their site, or off-site, which is why they used the McQueen High School. You know, at some point, they could outgrow the site and have to look for another location. But because of the size, it's 13 acres, it allows them to have the parking that they can accommodate what they need within their worship center. So, and this is with any use, you know? Just because the code says this is how many parking spaces you should have, doesn't mean that's how many parking spaces in actuality your use generates. And we see this on all types of uses. But for this church in particular, their needs are much larger than what the code requires. So they've accommodated that, but they've also added the additional landscaping, which is kind of, I would say, the, the hit you take when you put in more parking that's required, is that you have to accommodate more landscaping. So they've done that as well.
Allowing more parking generally translates to increased auto-use. If, as society, we're trying to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, et cetera, how is that, and I think that's one of the goals of our new draft master plan, sustainability, and how do you square up? You know, while we're talking about, yes, these are code minimums, but if you allow, and it's not so much based on this one parking lot, but the fundamental concepts of providing more parking than, you know, than you might need as a way of covering all your bases? Is that really the planning principle that we should be looking at for these, you know, for providing additional parking way above what the minimum requirements would be?
I think there's a couple things you can look at, is, is, one is the location. It's, it's in a residential area, so that, that helps in this case because a lot of people that go to this church live in the area and can walk to the church. So that, just the location itself allows for that to happen. The other thing is providing that shuttle service. So they have cars that can drive to McQueen High School, people that can, that are closer, living closer to McQueen High School, can go to McQueen High School and take a shuttle. So again, that's something that, as the church, can actively do to help reduce, reduce their carbon footprint by providing that service. That, a lot of churches don't provide that ability. But this one does, and then again, they're trying to accommodate what their needs are, what their congregation, their expanding congregation needs are. So this is how they've kind of come up with some solutions to that problem.
So one could argue that by providing this additional parking area closer to the church, you're reducing the amount of vehicle trips, shuttle trips, et cetera, as a way to justify the level of expansion of parking?
You could also say that by providing the parking, they don't have to provide a whole nother building at a different location, which would even add more to the building footprint and take away from potential open space.
Thank you. No further questions?
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? How about discussion? Mr. Johnson?
Actually, I, I have no others for discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay. Please do.
In the case of LDC 17-00066, Grace Church, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to the conditions. And I can make all of the findings.
Okay. Excellent. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Commissioner Olivas, I'll second the motion, and I can make all the findings.
Okay. Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to reemphasize the point that I was trying to make here, which is I'm not opposed to this particular project, but I think the concept of providing, you know, substantially overparking, or, you know, facilities that allow substantial overparking is not the direction I think perhaps is best for the community in the long run. So I don't, you know, I know this, you know, is an issue in the new master plan, but Sienna just told me that there is no parking maximums that we've set, but it's something that we may want to think about. Thanks.
Okay. Additional discussion?
Commissioner Hawkins, there's no difference... Commissioner Hawkins, uh there's no difference for them wanting the extra parking than a casino wanting extra parking, it's good for business.
Okay, a motion and a second is on the table, so I'll call for a vote.
Point of clarification, does the motion include the condition number thirteen that was proposed?
Thank you, Greg, I apologize for that, I will amend my uh motion to include uh condition number thirteen as presented by staff. I even had writ, had that written down to say it, and I forgot, so thank you.
I did too, excellent, thanks Greg. All right, amended motion, does the second ter also?
Second also includes that.
Uh motion and a second on the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously, good luck with the project, thank you. At this point, we will move down on our agenda to item six point two, this will be our last public hearing item of the evening. This is case number L D C seventeen dash zero 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 six two Spectrum Dandini Mixed Use Site, and we will welcome the applicant's representative for presentation. Mr. Crater, welcome.
Good evening, and thank you. For the record, my name is Ken Crater, and my partners and I are in contract to purchase twenty-five point six six acres up on U S three ninety-five and Par Dandini along Spectrum Boulevard, and we're very excited to present this project to you tonight. The request is for several different items, there are special use permits, it's for hillside development, grading that results in cuts greater than twenty feet in depth and fills greater than ten feet in height, grading disturbance of a major drainage way, and accessory drive-through facility, and operations between eleven P M. and six A M. uh associated with a proposed mixed-use development. The project will consist of four hundred and twenty multifamily units, apartments, a hundred and twenty-room hotel, about forty-eight hundred square feet of restaurant uses, and also a daycare facility for a hundred and thirty-five students. The site is within the Dandini Regional Center, it's zone mixed-use, and you can see the area outlined in blue, but I also want to point out some other things. This is the Par Dandini Interchange, and up the hill to Dandini takes you to the Desert Research Institute, and then also the Truckee Meadows Community College. Uh T M C C, I believe, has somewhere in the range of about eight to ten thousand students, and I heard uh within the last eighteen months or so, I believe that D R I has somewhere upwards of about a hundred and eighty P H Ds that work there, and I think we all know what a great, great research facility that is, and then obviously you have all the support staff up there too. You have the S P C A building right here, and then this is the uh Regional Dispatch Center, and then the Public Safety Training Facility, and in conversations with Chief Jason Soto, uh he uh worked, he and his staff worked very hard with us to address the issues of security for that facility, uh but I feel that he was uh uh very anxious and welcoming to see our site to have both apartments for people to live that work at his facility, as well as a hotel for all the officers that visit that facility for training exercises, and then obviously the restaurants as supportive services for those uses. This is the jail, which sits on the other side of the freeway, that was an initial concern from us in purchasing the facility, uh but it's a very secure facility, and if anything, I believe we'll have one of the safest sites in town with the number of officers that are patrolling in that site between the jail and the public safety facility. And then also to point out that this area really sits in sort of its own site, and the nearest residential is all the way across the U S three ninety-five freeway, uh roughly seven hundred feet away from the nearest apartment buildings, and also several dozen feet lower in height. It is a hillside development, uh about seventy-three percent of our site is less than fifteen percent, but we do have portions of the site greater than fifteen percent. Uh fortunately, it's only got a very small area over thirty percent in slope of only one point one one percent. Uh at the end of the day, based on the hillside development calculations, we had to leave about two point nine four acres of open space, which we not only achieved, but exceed. Uh you can see the slope map here, the areas in green are those areas under fifteen percent, and you can see there's a rather steep area right along here that's basically left as open space, and then there's a rock outcropping in this area which is also left as open space. It's also interesting to note that when Spectrum Boulevard was put through, and then also the Training Center, you can see these areas of steep slope along the roadway, they actually raised the road and then the emergency access for the public safety facility above our site. So we wanted to figure out a way to grade this site to not impact those slopes and require a bunch of fill brought onto this site. Some of the unique aspects of the site too, uh the fact that the Regional Transportation Commission's Regional Transportation Plan long-term in the ten-year horizon calls for a major connection between U S three ninety-five at this Par Dandini Interchange and the Spanish Springs area. I know the governor has stated very clearly at a recent Transportation Board meeting that uh his number one priority right now is dealing with the spaghetti bowl, and then also adding the third southbound lane from the North Valleys to the spaghetti bowl, uh but I expect that we will see this improvement eventually because it will have a major positive impact in allowing traffic from Spanish Springs to access all the employment in the North Valleys and vice versa, and actually provide relief for the spaghetti bowl, so we wanted to make sure that use is on our site, and also the layout of our site was not impacted by that future project. We did a series of visioning exercise, looking at how we would landscape around buildings, the plant pellet, and we felt that this site is crying out for native species of plants that are uh both drought tolerant and worthy of this site in terms of Great Basin high desert landscape pellets. And as we know from living in this area, there's a great selection of plants with a wide variety of colors that we can bring into this site. We also knew that with four hundred and twenty apartments in the hotel, that we would need a lot of areas to recreate, and so we looked at different focal centers for fitness and picnic activities, shade structures, this site is very much exposed to the sun in the afternoon, and we wanted to make sure that we would bring in areas where people could still get outside to get out of the hot sun. And then also, we're gonna have significant trails along this site, and so we wanted to look at some areas where we could have trail markers and identification to point out some of the features like Mount Rose, Peavine Peak, and some of the natural surrounding areas. Uh because of the topography, we're gonna have some uh very unique areas where we can really have some fun with different trails and march trails up these slopes that will provide fitness exercises, steps, and again, looking at how we can incorporate areas for people to congregate, for social activities, uh again, nice trail systems, and also bringing in artwork. Uh the one area that I pointed out, the larger steep area, is a great site for uh pedestrian and recreational amenities. We basically left that as open space, I do want to point out that area is largely disturbed. It was basically graded out when they built the public safety facility, but it's still a unique site for an overlook for people to enjoy the beautiful views that the site has of the Sierra Mountains and areas beyond. And then finally, some more inspirational images, you can see some fun things that we'll be able to do with the trail system up the slope, and we even came up with the idea of having an overall exercise fitness course that maximize the number of stairs, again, for the fitness buffs that love to get their steps in every day. Cementary way features, fitness equipment, and even looking at how we would deal with the one major drainage way that runs through the side in a roadway crossing to connect the multifamily with the commercial and the hotel site. And finally, some stuff that ties in with the clubhouse to make sure that we've got a really good set of amenities for the people that live and work in this project. We had to deal with traffic, we did a very comprehensive traffic study, we knew from the get-go that the ramps at Par Dandini three ninety-five are to level Service F during the peak hours, and so we looked at ways to mitigate those, and also looked at ways to provide points of access to minimize the number of points of access onto the site, and as I had pointed out, with the steep slopes down from Spectrum to the site, we wanted to work with the topography, and again, minimize the amount of access uh and grading required for the site. At the end of the day, we're going to signalize the two intersections of those on and off ramps at Par Dandini U S three ninety-five. We did look at roundabouts, but in discussions with city staff, the R T C and N dot, it was decided that this was not a good use of funds because the new project will eventually rebuild that entire interchange, so it wasn't deemed as a good use of funds to do something that's essentially a temporary solution. But I do want to point out that we have a condition of approval to do a more detailed traffic study before we submit for a building permit, and we expect that we're gonna have to do some improvements at the existing uh roundabout that goes from Dandini Par onto Spectrum Boulevard because it was built, in my opinion, too small, it's not very functional. So at a minimum, I think we're gonna have to look at a free-flow right turn lane from Spectrum coming down the street, turning on towards Par Boulevard. We did a major sewer study, you can see how far we had to follow the sewer line all the way down the site to a lift station to make sure that we had adequate sewer capacity. We're gonna have to run a flow study on this site, but we're confident that uh we can now provide adequate sewer for the site. We did find out as we got into the storm drainage system, and you can see the extent of the area that we had to model, that uh for whatever reason, when the S P C A came in, and then also when the jail came in, this area was not considered a major drainage way, it didn't drain a hundred acres, and so you can see these solid black lines are areas where that drainage way was piped. So it's basically piped both upstream and downstream of our project, but we end up with two large detention basins in here to slow down the flow, to be able to capture the silt that runs down the hill, reduce the silt that flows into the Truckee River, and also slow the flow of water for the downstream. Geotech, we expected due to the rock outcroppings that we would have a lot of hard rock, so you can see we did a multitude of test pits on this site, and we found what we expected, that there's areas with volcanic rock, uh some not too uh deep. You can see this area which is soil, and this area which gets into harder rock. And so we worked on a site plan to minimize the amount of cut in this project, and actually designed it for more import than export to minimize the cut and the amount of damage that we would have to do uh in that volcanic rock. So this is the site plan that we ended up with, we're able to use all of the existing median openings along Spectrum Boulevard. The only point where we have to add a new median opening is the furthest point of access to the north for the apartment project. And then also, I said, we worked with the folks from the Public Safety Facility and Dispatch Center. We're going to install an additional turnaround at the end of this street, and then be able to put a security gate, so those folks will have secure access into their facility, their existing cul-de-sacs sits right in here. And then we're also going to build a six-foot-tall metal fence in this area that has security features at the top of the fence, along with thorny bushes, to discourage children and any other sort of pedestrians from trying to get into the public safety facility, and that was deemed adequate. The big thing that really made this site work is all the apartment units, we're able to step these up the hillside, and also, the unique thing about this is the uphillside of the project will have three levels of apartments, and the downhill four units, and that allows us to take up grade with every single apartment building and step this project up and down the hillside, and as a result, you can see the upper half, this is the only significant area with fills greater than ten feet, there's a couple smaller areas here, no areas with cut that exceed twenty feet, and again, on the southern half, you can see there's a area here by the detention with fills greater than uh ten feet, and this is the only area on the site that has cuts greater than twenty feet. The other thing I want to point out is the large overhead electric line that runs along U S three ninety-five, we're able to position the buildings such that not one single apartment building is adjoining these poles. You can see one next to the clubhouse, one next to the uh hotel building, more than a hundred feet away, and then on the other portion, you can see the final third pole is near the open space area, so I was very happy that we're able to separate those poles from the actual apartment units. You can see the elevations that we came up with, they were designed, again, fit into the terrain, and also match some of the colors that we're gonna have, both with the existing landscaping and some of the vegetation that we're gonna introduce. You can see the lower side of the units with four floors and the upper side with three. These are very efficient units, are gonna be cost-effective to build to keep the rents down as much as we can. You can see the front elevation, and finally, the side elevation, and this was another unique aspect of the project, is we had three units that basically align with Spectrum, and so we designed entries for these side units so people can actually walk to and from Spectrum directly out of their apartment unit. You can see the final landscape plan, I want to point out that the site required a hundred and sixty-seven trees. We're gonna introduce approximately four hundred trees on the site, and four and a half acres of landscaping required. We're gonna end up landscaping seven point four acres, again, this rock outcropping will remain as an open space natural feature for the site, taking advantage of all the different views, and then also accessing the site directly between the apartments and the commercial site. So the idea is that folks can walk down to daycare, walk and get a cup of coffee, and hop on the bus and go to work. And then again, you can see the hotel, the drive-through site, we've got a large loading area to comply with code requirement. And I also want to point out on the parking on this, we had a definitive unit count, we know our mix of one, two, three bedrooms, so we actually worked with the I T E uh parking generation manual, and basically determined the actual amount of parking we need on the site to accommodate the uses, it came out to about one point three spaces per dwelling unit, if we were doing this project per normal code, we would have close to two spaces per dwelling unit, so we're far under what would normally be required by code, you can see some more uh designs around the building. And I think staff did a really good job in laying out the staff report, but we did find three things that we wanted to bring up to the commission. The first deals with the phasing of the project and the building permits, the original condition basically said we had to pull all the permits within eighteen months, that's just not feasible for the magnitude of this project. And so we suggest a new condition where we would pull the first building permit within eighteen months, successive permits within twelve months, and then have all the permits applied for and be under construction within forty-two months. And then the last two were to go from a building to permit to a certificate of occupancy because clearly it'd be tough to install trees before we actually get approved plans. And then finally, on fifteen, to clarify that those uh major trees will go in within each phase, and I believe staff is uh is also okay with those changes to the conditions. So that concludes my presentation, I'm very excited to present this project, we think it's gonna be a great infill uh project in this area to bring more workforce housing to our community, and that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Okay, Ken, thank you very much.
Hey.
Turn it over to staff, Jeff, welcome.
Good evening again, Commissioners, Jeff Borkard, Associate Planner, for the record. Um Ken actually did a great job going through the staff report, going through the the proposed uh development project. I'll highlight a few areas of interest, uh some conditions of approval that uh that you might be interested in. Uh let me get some exhibits up here for you so we can can we zoom out a little bit, Michelle? So uh there's a couple conditions, one notable aspect of this is it is adjacent to a freeway. Uh when you have residential adjacent to a freeway, you have to be concerned about noise, potential pollution impacts, things like that, so there are conditions uh that deal with um the construction methods of the apartments, there's a condition that recommends clusters of of evergreen trees, which sort of blends in with the existing um evergreen landscape that's up on the hill in specific spots up there, there's clusters, existing clusters of evergreen trees, and evergreen trees actually help uh suck up diesel particulate matter, which will help with some of the uh um pollution up in that area. While there was only elevations provided for the apartment buildings, there are conditions that um that deal with uh matching this architecture with regards to fenestration, use of materials, roof pitches, et cetera, on the hotel, the childcare facility, the clubhouse, and the restaurant uses. And so, one of the things that's notable is the applicant did provide uh exact footprints, um building um sizes, uh so we do know exactly what the parking requirements are, uh whether or not they meet the Florida area ratio requirements, or the density calculations for this specific zone. And and there's also additional conditions, one, which requires them to follow the plans. Uh seven, eight, and nine are all proposed to ensure the buildings are compatible with one another. Um grading, Ken did a great job outlining how this project has used hillside adaptive architecture in order to step up the hill, reduce the overall grading impact, and use architecture to the advantage um to to lessen the scarring and the visual to the advantage to lessen the scarring and the visual impact of grading on the overall site. And it also helped protect some of the natural features in the area, like the rock outcroppings, which is something that's really important to the city and is represented through various policies within the master plan. In addition to that... Did I get shut off? Oh, okay. In addition to that, the major drainage way, as Ken mentioned, has been disturbed both upstream and downstream from the proposed site. The proposed detention basins will help slow down that flow, help allow for more percolation into the ground and help clean up some of the groundwater. There's also the standard condition that you see on all major drainage way projects with regards to the noxious weed management program that would be required for the whole site to maintain. From a traffic standpoint, we do have our engineers available for discussion. The applicants also here available for that. From the regional training center, Ken, myself, the police chief did meet to discuss the requirements that would help preserve the security of the regional training facility. There will be a gate installed along with a fence with security features and the thorny bushes. That is a condition of approval as part of the project. In addition to that, there will be a disclosure that's going to be required for all the residents to... That are leasing the facility as part of the lease, they'll get that disclosure that says that there could be gunshots, sounds, and fire engines, and barking dogs, and smoke coming up from the buildings in the back, so that they're aware that they don't freak out, you know, when they start hearing all that stuff. In addition to that, schools are always important with a residential project. The school district did provide us with comments with all the portable classroom facilities that they have at each one of the schools' sites. The schools are under capacity at this point and with WC-1 and the funding upgrades, or the funding source, there will be upgrades in many of the North Valley schools. Let's see. Ken did request three changes with regards to number two. Staff is fine with that. The project will be phased, and so we're generally okay with that phasing. Number 13 was just an error on staff's behalf, so the certificate of occupancy is what it should have read in the first place. So good job, Ken, for catching that. And number 15, within each phase, is perfectly adequate for staff. With that being said, we can make all the findings and recommend for approval, and I am available for any questions, should you have any.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate the presentation. This is a public hearing item. We'll take public comment. Before we get there, I will ask for disclosures from commissioners. Commissioner Marshall, any disclosures? None? I am familiar with the site. That's my only disclosure.
Commissioner Johnson, I visited the site, did not ride there on my bike. I drove there.
Commissioner Hawkins... I'm sorry. Commissioner Hawkins visited the site.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to open public comment. Michelle, I don't have any public comment cards. Do you?
No, I don't.
Okay. Anyone wishing to make a public comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, I...
Actually, you may.
You may. Please do. If you could state your name when you get up there.
Yeah. I'm Sean Farnin. I'm director with the SPCA. Excuse my ignorance on the whole process and everything that's going on. We got a card in the mail about 10 days ago about this hearing. We knew nothing about this development of the property, what was planned. I'm not sure what's going to happen tonight. I'm not even sure if escrow is even closed, where this is going to be moving forward or not. So maybe if you would indulge me, I could ask a couple of questions around that.
So you can ask the questions. We can't engage with you on public comment, but we can certainly address them in our questions to staff and in our discussions.
Okay. So again, I'm not sure if the escrow is closed, and this is getting ready to happen subject to your approval of the modifications or the special use permits, whatever they're asking for. Again, we have heard from nobody about this. It looks like a great project. You know, I just want everybody to know we have a lot of barking dogs up there. We've recently purchased adjacent property to potentially expand our facility, which would be more barking dogs. In a residential neighborhood, I'm sure that would become annoying. So I'm just curious how that's all going to get worked out with potential tenants on the property. Spectrum Boulevard, you know, I couldn't really tell if the property or the road is going to be expanded. It's a pretty narrow road up and back. There are two lanes. It's already heavily trafficked with everybody going up to the fire and police facility. I'm not sure if they're going to expand the road or not. I know there was some talk about some drainage issues and things like that. The main flow of water coming off the hillside runs right through our property, and it's barely adequate as it is. Unfortunately, surrounding that space where the water channels through, there's no room on our property to expand it. And if there's going to be concern about, you know, additional water flow and how they're going to plumb all that, if you will, I'd be interested to know how that might impact us up the hill a little bit. What else can I think of? That's really about it. I'm a little bummed. I'm going to lose my view of Mount Rose out of my office with three-story building in front of me, but, you know, that's the way it goes. So that's really all the comment I have. It's not really common. It's just a bunch of ideas that maybe need to be talked about, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Sean, could you fill out a public comment card, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments? All right. We're going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. Who'd like to start us off? Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Johnson, first question for Jeff, just as a point of clarification. Can you... We're obviously looking at a number of different items here. If I'm reading it correctly, what is actually triggering the special use permit? Are these activities allowed based on the district that we're in? It appears that we're basically allowed, but there's just some special conditions that are bringing about the special use permit.
The only thing that require... The only use that requires a special use permit is the drive-through, the accessory drive-through facility. The special conditions that you're talking about, the cuts and fills, so the cuts greater than or deeper than 20 feet and fills greater than 10 feet, that is one of the special conditions. The other condition is the fact that there are slopes greater than 15% on the side and they're going through and developing on the hillside development. So that's a trigger. And then in addition to that, there is the major drainage way component. And the major drainage way typically gets triggered if you're doing disturbance on a major drainage way that drains more than 100 acres. This drains 101 acres, so it just hits the major drainage way. And the other one is the hours of operation between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And that could be for a lot of the various different uses, whether that be the hotel or the restaurant component. Obviously, the multifamily residential component has 24-hour... Somebody's making tea in the...
That's our air conditioner turning off.
Yeah. So those are all the various different special use permits that are required, but really one is related to use.
So then, a couple of questions regarding the conditions of approval. I appreciate, I think you said architecture, like, four times in your presentation? You know that warms my heart when you do that. But there's a couple of things that are in here that I actually want to question because I'm not... I'm not quite sure how they're going to be enforced. There is a requirement on number six, and this goes back, this was part of the reason why I was asking why we were doing the special use permit. And the drive-through facility that's in there is the main, it's one of the conditions that's bringing about the special use permit. So I wanted to make sure that I was addressing all of those. Item number six talks about screening of the drive-through with respect to the adjacent property. Now, from the site plan, that residential property that we have is across the main entranceway, uphill and out of the way. So, but I also understand that there's a code requirement for screening this, and I'm willing to accept that as a part of the condition. But the wording that you have here for the solid wall connected to the building for the drive-through, I have a couple of concerns with that. I don't know if that's the entire length of the building, where the drive-through window is at, or just at the drive-through, in which case I now have a solid wall that is three feet wide or slightly larger. I guess what I would like to see is some reconditioning of that that would require screening of the drive-through. But I think, and, you know, architectural compatibility is good, but requiring that to be connected to the building, I foresee a tunnel-like effect, a safety-type issue there. I would almost rather see something on the site that addresses and can be looked at from a sightline standpoint. So I'd like to clean that condition up. The second one I asked you is, you've got a point in here about the architecture is consistent, which is great, in item number seven. Is there a reason why you follow that up with materials, colors, roof pitches, and/or fenestration? Is it possible to strike that line? My reason is...
I mean, we could strike that line. It was just to add extra clarification and not make the condition so general...
And I can...
In terms of what's consistent.
So is it appropriate to have the hotel architecture match the multifamily architecture in, from a visual standpoint? I guess that's my question. Is that what you were going for so that the hotel would basically look like the multifamily units?
I think in initial discussions with the applicant, that was the intent, was to have the whole project function and appear as one whole cohesive development, and architecture would tie it together. It wouldn't have to match exactly, which is kind of the point. I mean, you do want to add some variety to a project, and this is a fairly large project. And, you know, I was on a recent road trip and drove by some very large projects in Des Moines, Iowa, which had maybe about 1,400 units, and every single building looked exactly the same. And so one of my fears is to replicate something similar to that, where every single building looks exactly the same here. And so what I did is I tried to provide some out for them in terms of what would be considered consistent and matching.
Okay. And then I guess I might take a break and let somebody else ask a few questions, if that's all right.
Did you want me to discuss item number seven? Or I mean, six?
I'm going to think about item number seven.
Okay.
Item number six, the question, I guess maybe it is a question for staff. If it's not connected to the building, does it still meet the intent of the code where you have to screen the drive-through?
We have building separation requirements, which makes it difficult to not connect it to the building, which is one of the requirements to connect it to the building, so it can be right up next to it. And so what we've done in the past, and I'll try to show you a plan view here, my brief little drawing here.
Did you do that while I was talking?
Yes, exactly. I promise I was listening to you. The window, the drive-through window, and then there would be some sort of connected thing. Usually you see some kind of trellis feature or a solid covered feature. More than likely, it'd be solid because of the weather that we get, especially during the winter. And then you would have a solid wall feature here. I was laughing a little bit with what you were saying because our code is very black and white when it comes to this particular provision. It says there has to be a wall between a drive-through facility and a residential use. It's just as black and white as that, regardless of how far away you are. You can be 2,000 feet away, but if you have nothing in between you, no building in between the window and the residential use, you've got to have some kind of wall or thing separating it. So it specifically says there has to be a building separating it. So what we've done is attached it to the building, and then therefore it is a building that is separating the proposed drive-through from the residential use. It's an extension of the main building, so the tunnel effect is the only way to achieve that requirement.
Okay. So based on that, what you're telling me is condition number six is understood by the building official to not require a wall the length of that side of the building.
That is, well, I don't know about technically the building official because I haven't had that conversation with the building official, but I understand it, and I'm the one that's going to get the permit. The applicant also understands it as well. And so we've had that conversation back and forth.
Okay. That answers that question. Mr. Chair, I'll defer some other questions till some other folks have had an opportunity.
Okay. Great. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Hawkins?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Question for Janelle. I spoke to John Flansburgh the other day, and he was going to try to get back to me before tonight's meeting on the 270% of flow in an eight-inch sewer pipe. Can you explain that to me?
Yes. Janelle Thomas, acting senior civil engineer for the record. So the requirement that is in place for the sewer analysis is that they will need to show that there is adequate capacity. The calculations that were made currently were based upon our standards that are in place in the Public Works Design Manual, and that it's based on a theoretical peak flow. Those resulted in the 270% value that was stated in the staff report. So what will happen technically is that they will do a final analysis. If there is mitigation that is required in order to provide sufficient capacity with their project, they will have to provide that at the time of building permit. They have to provide a final sewer report, which indicates that there is capacity.
Can I add to that answer?
You bet.
For the record, Ken Crater. So what you do in this situation is we're actually going to do a flow test on that sewer line. We're going to put a camera and run it all the way down the line. And the issue that we're facing within our community is that the Public Works Design Manual has really, in my mind, an old outdated requirement for multifamily because with low-flow toilets and showerheads and sinks and all that, the actual generation of sewer that comes out of these units is maybe half or less of what code says. So the flow test will tell us exactly what's going on, and then we'll do the final sewer report. And if we have to end up and go replace 500 feet or add a parallel line, then that will be a requirement of our building permit because one of the conditions of the approval is to submit the final sewer study, including mitigations required to comply with code, and make sure that we don't exceed the capacity of whatever existing pipe or new pipe that we have to put in.
Couple of additional questions since you're up here, Mr. Crater. I've got a hard time about that roundabout. I've taken it too many times to know that it's the worst roundabout I've ever seen.
It's horrible.
It's the smallest and the worst, and unless something's done with it, the northbound and southbound off-ramps aren't going to alleviate the problem. It's going to choke right there, and it's going to cause more problems than Clearacre causes us from where we're coming from the North Valley. So we have to address that. I don't care what we do, but it can't go forward unless we address the problem with the roundabout. And we have the northbound lane coming in for TMCC, and we know how that gets. It goes back past the protective lines of the off-ramp.
Right.
And with 4,000 or 4,700 more trips daily, that's just going to aspirate the problem, and it's going to go back to where Clearacre's coming back up on the road, and it's going to back up that far. And we're really going to have a serious problem there.
Yeah. So when we run our final traffic study, again, it's a condition of approval. We're going to do a micro-simulation analysis, probably use a model called CourseM. And it actually allows you to see the vehicles moving through, where the stack-up is, and then in addition to the traffic signals, we're going to have to make whatever improvements that need to be made within that roundabout, which may include, you know, widening out that whole roundabout, especially for that movement northbound to Trekkie Meadows Community College, to make sure we maintain the adopted service level standard for that roundabout. So CourseM is a great tool to use. It's going to tell us exactly what's going on, what's going on with the addition of our traffic, and what we need to do to make that movement acceptable.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Marshall?
I think these are, starting with Jeff.
I think these are, starting with Jeff. The biggest issue I have here, well, there's a couple, but this is a workforce moderate housing project, probably, whatever, with no connection to transit. As I understand, the staff report, the closest transit station is across the freeway, and there's no pedestrian access across the overpass. Do I have that? Is that right?
Um, I, I would defer to the applicant on whether or not this is gonna be, um, anything less than market-rate housing. As far as I am aware, it is market-rate housing. They have not applied for any affordability aspect.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that the targeted market.
Sure.
Um, as described by, by Mr. Crater, but i- is there no, I mean, how can we address this? You know, it just seems to me that we have to have some sort of connection to transit. And is there any way that we can, you know, condition the approval to some sort of shuttle service, or some kind of connection that allows, uh, the occupants to access transit?
So, so, um, this is something that I was concerned about when reviewing the project, and typically what we see is, uh, the provision of sidewalk, uh, accessibility through, um, a project or adjacent to a project close to a transit station. The, the closest transit station on this case is on the west side of the freeway, directly adjacent to the Washoe County, um, jail. And there is no, uh, pedestrian, um, access across the bridge right now, and I didn't feel that it would be, uh, uh, there would be a nexus for them to build a new bridge that would accommodate sidewalks on it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't not suggesting they build a new bridge, but there's other ways you can provide connectivity to transit.
So, so that, that was my initial thoughts, is the, is the sidewalk connectivity. Um, we can certainly explore other options. Um, i- i- if it's not a physical development condition, it makes it hard for the city of Reno to go through and enforce whether or not they're doing shuttle service on a regular basis or not. Um, it, it, when it comes to that use aspect of things beyond what we can control, um, it, it's hard from an administrative level. But we can certainly explore other options, uh, tonight, and the applicant is here. If you wanna, um, ask him that question as well.
I would love to have Mr. Crater, but it looks like we have another staff person, Janelle, who-
Oh, she's sneaking up behind me, huh?
I was sneaking up behind you. Janelle Thomas, for the record, again. Um, what I did want to share with the commission is that, um, as I'm sure that you are all aware, uh, based upon our discussion for the Stonegate project, that ENDOT is currently in the process of, um, doing a corridor study, uh, for our freeway systems, as well as RTC is doing a North Valleys, um, specific study related to pedestrian and, um, vehicular, uh, traffic analysis. So, I don't believe that those studies are complete, but, you know, some projects actually may be identified in this area. I know that they, that Par Boulevard, I believe that Par Boulevard was one of the, um, interchanges that was being looked at. I know that Lemon Valley, Lemon Drive was, and Sted Boulevard were also, but I'd be happy to check in with, um, Julie Masterpool at RTC to see, um, where those projects may or may not stand also.
Yeah, I think there, in the staff report, there is a description of when, while the, uh, the EIS is slated for the third quarter of 2017, there is no time set for final plans or construction for the Par intersection.
Right.
Can I hear from Ken?
Uh, sure. I, I did want to highlight one additional condition that we have in there too, is to place sidewalks at those, or, um, not sidewalks, uh, crosswalks at the proposed, uh, intersections, at the interchanges, so that at least there's a shoulder that people can walk on. So, if they would like to walk across the bridge, that there would now at least be some excess, uh, safety measures that were, that are added, uh, when it comes to the, the crosswalks at the interchanges. So, there'd actually be push-button crosswalks that you can use.
But that wouldn't provide what we would consider to be safe connectivity across the bridge, though, would it?
No, it wouldn't. I wouldn't have them put a sidewalk in with raised curbs or anything like that, because that would take analysis of, of whether or not the bridge can, can handle that or the right way, and dealing with ENDOT and all that stuff. So, as part of, as part of this, I, I did what we can do at this point to, to condition a, um, crosswalk, because you could still walk on the shoulder. It's not the safest thing in the world, but people are already doing it. So, it just adds that extra level of safety that we can at least condition.
Thank you.
For the record, Ken Crater, we all share the same concern, and the good news is, there is a transit line there. The bus stops within a quarter mile, which is a typical walking distance for a pedestrian. And I'm going to work with ENDOT to see if we can actually physically fit a piece of sidewalk along that bridge where that existing shoulder is. To me, that's the best solution. I know Jeff wasn't comfortable in conditioning it, but I actually put in my application materials that we would look at that. And then also, we're gonna work with RTC, because I believe once our project's developed with the four-hundred-and-twenty apartments, the, the hotel, all the uses there, that there's a chance to work with them to get another stop on the other side of the street, where we don't have the crossing of the freeway. So, I think there's a lot of options here. Um, we don't have the final answer yet, but at the end of the day, you know, it is a permitted use. I think the site makes great sense for multifamily. In fact, any other use would require significantly more grading on the site, you know, the fact that we're able to step it up the hill. Uh, but I believe we will work with staff, with ENDOT and the RTC to find a solution for this transit problem, to make sure that we do have safe access for transit riders, because it is multifamily, and, uh, typically about, you know, ten percent of the folks that live here would choose to ride the bus if they can. So, it's important to me to figure out solutions to provide that access.
Uh, would you be opposed, then, to a condition that say you would provide shuttle service until, like, a sidewalk goes in, or some other solution that allows people to safely access a transit stop? There's a transit stop added to the other side?
The problem with the shuttle service is the transit, you know, the pedestrian trips for transit are so random, uh, it'd be, I think, very difficult to achieve a system like that. I think we're better off looking at working with ENDOT on sidewalk, new bus stop locations. To me, those are more realistic, 'cause, uh, um, you know, depending on people's work schedules and time of day, uh, I think a shuttle system, my rule is never set yourself up for failure, and I see potential shutters, shuttle system as a failure, just because there's not a consistent, you know, ridership or time when people want to access the transit. "Oh, I'm hungry. I'm gonna go hop on the bus and go up to the Rayleigh's Grocery Store." Well, that could be at two in the morning or four o'clock in the afternoon.
On the other hand, I think there is a set schedule for the bus arrivals at, uh, that stop, I assume.
Yes, they're very frequent. It's, uh, basically, uh, a twenty, you know, it's an all-day service, and, uh, I can't remember if the stops are like every thirty minutes or an hour, but it's a consistent stop. Uh, but again, the problem is, you know, is there might be six-hour period where there's no one accessing the bus.
I do, I mean, just my personal experience of having similar type of conditions with shuttle services, um, a PTO, they do work. They allow people to access transit, uh, and so I would be less pessimistic, uh, more optimistic about the ability of shuttle system, at least in the interim, to provide some connectivity.
And I'm not opposed to that. Um, you know, we can certainly figure out how to have a vehicle at the manager's leasing office, right? So, if somebody wants to ride the bus that isn't comfortable, um, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to doing that, but I'm just saying, I think I want to find a more permanent solution, so.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Jeff, can I quiz you a little more on, um, I'm, I'm trying to figure out the conditions particularly, uh, thirty-two and thirty-four on the timing of the traffic signals. We're moving this into, or it looks like we're making an F situation worse with the creation of this project, but then we're, uh, talking about, uh, the mitigation measures for, uh, signalization that would bring it to a B and a C? I, I'm trying to figure out what the timing is of those, um, the signalization. Uh, when, when are the, when is that required to be in?
Yeah, and, and the engineers can jump in and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but i- it is with the initial phase. The, i- i- as part of the, as part of the initial phase, they're gonna be submitting a revised traffic study. What we know now is it already is not operating. And so, uh, they're gonna have to bring it into compliance in order to operate at a Level Service D at least, and so, as part of that, um, th- that's all gonna get triggered with the first phase anyways. So, that's the timing.
So, here's, here's what condition thirty-four says. Prior to the issuance of any permits for the installation of the traffic signals at the north and southbound on-ramps, et cetera, the applicant shall have plans approved showing a crosswalk. Okay, that's not the right one. Maybe it's thirty-two. Prior to the issuance of each permit submitted before intersection improvements, the applicant shall provide a traffic study update for each phase. The traffic report. I, I, pardon me, fellow commissioners, for trying to work through this on the fly, but all recommended roadway, pedestrian, or intersection improvements, and if by the traffic, the update shall be completed and accepted prior to any C of O. Is that where we get the intersection improvements?
Correct. So, what's gonna end up happening is there, at, at the initial permit, the way it's worded now is that every permit i- is, is supposed to require this until such time that the intersections are improved. If it's deemed through the, the traffic study update that these, um, signals are required, which they're more than likely going to be required at the first phase, then they would no longer need a traffic study update each time, if that makes sense. Can I speak to your question?
Yes, please.
The traffic signals are going into the first phase, period in the story. It's a Level Surf F right now. So, they have to go in-
Can we somehow say that directly?
With the first phase, and if you want to change that condition to that effect, I don't think anybody here is gonna have any issue with it.
I, I just couldn't weave my way through this condition, that's all. If there's no objection to the applying to other commissioners, I think it would be maybe-
Yeah, it, it can't handle any more traffic without fixing it.
Excellent. Thank you. That's, I don't have any more questions.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do one more. My apology. Internal connectivity, Ken, maybe this is to you. Um, there, is it, the way that, uh, the multifamily gets to the childcare is having to go around Spectrum, is there any internal connectivity, that they don't have to go out on the sidewalk and down?
Yes, there's internal connectivity for the entire site, and in fact, I'm glad you asked that question with the gentleman from the SPCA. We have an extensive trail system throughout the entire project, and it's kinda hard to see, but there's pathways throughout the entire project where people can get to any of the different uses without having to go out on Spectrum. And in fact, we're gonna record a public use easement over these trail systems, so folks that wanna go, s- have interest in getting an animal from SPCA, a dog, they're gonna be able to walk the dog throughout our trail system to see if they're compatible or not. The folks work at the public safety facility. We'll be able to walk down internally through the site to go to a restaurant, and people that are staying in the hotel can use all of the pathways within the apartment site for recreational activities when they're staying at the hotel.
Okay. Hey, Jeff, could you take a look at condition eight? It says, "Prior to the issuance of any building permit for site improvements, the applicant shall demonstrate that the direct, that direct pedestrian connectivity is provided from the sidewalk along Spectrum to the childcare facilities." I just want to make certain that that's not interpreted as, that's the only connection that they need to provide.
That's the way. It's, it's not interpreted that way.
And so, why did you feel like this condition was important, just?
Because of the mixed-use standards. The mixed-use standards require direct pedestrian connectivity to various different buildings. Um, we've done it through several different, um, multifamily buildings, but, uh, wanted to provide additional connectivity to both the childcare facility and the restaurant use, because those were the ones that were set closest to the-
Would you modify condition eight to include internal as well as, um, I don't know if the sidewalk on Spectrum is considered external, but-
We typically don't condition code, um, and code requires internal connectivity no matter what. Those, so, that's gonna be required no matter what, even if there was no special use permit came in.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Jeff, before you sit down, I've got a couple of questions for you. Jeff, we've got some unique uses adjacent to this site, I would say, with the training center and the SPCA, and I know that a lot of the conditions as, um, um, address the, you know, the, um, the development itself, and not necessarily the impacts on those adjacent uses, but, you know, the way this site kinda fits into the area, it might be worth just having a, a discussion. So, my first question is, um, related to the training center. What is the timing of some of the activity up there? I mean, we have the condition in there where, you know, residents are gonna be alerted to the fact that there may be some strange noises that might, you know, uh, seem a little out of the ordinary. When does that occur? Is that during the day, at night?
Um, I'll, I'll defer it over to our police department representative who can better answer that question. Thanks.
Evening, commissioners. Mac Vanzon, deputy chief of operations for the Reno Police Department. Um, out of full transparency, the training center is owned and directly operated by the county, uh, with the city of Reno, the city of Sparks, and Washoe County being signatories and partnering agencies, uh, in the training center. Particular to the noises that you were addressing, Commissioner, the gunshots, the, the range is adjacent to the training center building. It's further to the east and slightly north of the training center building. And those go usually about zero-six-hundred to ten PM. And then, uh, our conditions, there are certain conditions as to when we can and can't shoot. Uh, it's Monday through Saturday, and then Sunday's a shorter timeframe. I think it's ten AM to six PM that we can shoot there. In terms of squealing tires, some of those conditions we heard about, there's an EVOC track, an emergency vehicle operations track, that is set up above the training center to the north, the, the building itself to the north. And we can use those, uh, facilities, uh, up to about ten PM as well, but no sirens are allowed. Uh, and so, you'll hear the squealing of the tires as the officers learn to drive, um, pursuit drive, if you will. And then, I don't know the conditions on the burn building for the fire center. There's a burn building that'll be directly north of the apartment complex, as I look at the plan, and I don't know the conditions on that. That'd be a question better suited, I guess, for the fire department.
Okay. So, other than the, the activities that you mentioned that are on the site, the traffic going on Spectrum to the site, I mean, we're not talking about sirens and things like that. I mean, it's just staff essentially commuting to work or, or to a training, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Would you say that, um, with the conditions that are proposed with the fence and the gate and the thorny bushes, that this use is a compatible use adjacent to the facility?
I believe it is. Uh, I know the chief had discussions, uh, with Mr. Crater, uh, and in terms of what we asked for, uh, was the disclosure, so that the folks there would be understanding that, you know, they may hear gunshots up to ten PM, uh, and that they may hear squealing tires, if you will, up to, you know, ten PM as well. But in those discussions, it seems like the applicant has met, uh, most of the requests that we had in terms of securing the facility, so that we don't have people wandering, uh, into the facility. For the most part, the facility's fenced off, uh, in any of those activities, uh, and, and not accessible to the public. You'd have to go through the building, uh, during business hours, and out into the back, and then all the way around in order to get to any of those portions that, uh, are somewhat dangerous. The inside of the facility is, is really just classrooms. So, yeah, I think, to answer your question directly, yes, I think we, we've mitigated most of the issues that we may have.
And that gate, that's gonna be an, an automated gate, so staff would just have, like, a card like we have for the parking garage or something like that?
That's one option. I think one of the other options that may be more, uh, reasonable is that during non-business hours, that gate is closed and accessed through some sort of a code or a key card in some way. Uh, and then during business hours, perhaps we leave that gate open, uh, just to accommodate better flow of traffic, so we don't stack traffic up, um, south of where that gate would be.
Okay. Great. Appreciate those-
Yeah, no problem.
... responses. Um, Jeff, sort of a follow-up question on that. For the, um, buildings themselves, I remember reading in the staff report that they're, the, um, building design for the face, the fascia facing the freeway was intended to be, you know, attenuate the noise, or be, you know, built in a way that the residents inside the buildings wouldn't hear- that the residents inside the buildings wouldn't hear the road, road noise. Could that also apply to, you know, potentially the, the other side of the buildings facing the training facility?
I do not believe the way the conditions worded is that it only applies to those portions of the windows and the construction that faces the freeway. I believe I conditioned it so that all multifamily has to have an interior decibel level of forty-five decibels, which is similar to what we would have if you were under the flight path or in the noise path of the airport. So it, it's a very similar condition. And, and that would be for all apartments on there, which would assist in helping mitigate some of the noise that may exist from both the SPCA and the, and the regional training facility.
So just to clarify, the internal decibel forty-five for all buildings, regardless of whether it's the buildings facing the freeway or not?
That's correct. And as part of the, as part of the condition, they, in the building permit process, they'll have to show us a list of construction materials that will bring that level down to a forty-five decibel level. This is a common condition that's used throughout jurisdictions, specifically those that are close to airports. Can I further address your concern?
Yeah, please.
For the record, Ken Crater and Mark gets this. We're not going to use different windows, right? It's not cost effective. So we're going to pick out a window that works on every single building and we're going to stick with that window. So we'll be able to meet that forty-five D B A throughout the entire site.
Excellent. Thank you. Let's see. I do have a couple of other questions, but if other commissioners have questions and want to jump in, I'll. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Johnson, I just, a question for, for Janelle. Jeff might be able to answer too if Janelle's writing. Question was raised about Spectrum itself in terms of the width of that. And I know we're using the existing, for the most part, the existing access points. What are the requirements on Spectrum with respect to, is there any enlarging required? Are there any turn pockets required? What kind of development would be done on that?
Yeah, there, there's not going to be any widening that's required. This doesn't, this doesn't trigger the, any kind of level of service degradation that would require that. There is a condition, though, however, to add bike lanes to, at least along the, the site frontage.
And, and having said that, that would also be verified by the completion of the traffic report. Is that correct? I mean, I understand that the level of service now is not bad, but it, that will be part of the examination of the traffic report that's required by the conditions.
That is, that is true and, and correct. But even as part of the in, initial preliminary traffic report that they provided to us, it doesn't need a width increase at all.
Okay.
It's sufficient at this point.
And then one more question for you, Jeff. In terms of, it's not a condition, but one of the, I, I guess it's one of the findings that we have to make. And it's a note in here about projects located within the mixed use zone require sustainable design elements and pedestrian amenities up to one percent of the total project cost.
Just the pedestrian amenities at one percent of the total project cost. Sustainable design elements. It, it doesn't have a specific threshold that you have to provide. It just says you have to provide sustainable design elements. With modern construction, a lot of sustainable design elements go into modern construction.
That was, that was my question. I was just trying to figure out what the one percent pertained to.
Yeah. The, the one percent is, is pertaining to pedestrian amenities. And so that could be anything from enhanced landscaping to the various different amenities that you saw during Ken's presentation. That is, you know, the, the exercise equipment, just things that the public can go into the site and use. And, and there's, they're going above and beyond at this point, one percent.
Okay. And then just two quick kind of technical questions. What, you talk about clusters of large evergreen trees. Can you define what that mean? I mean, is, is a cluster like three? Is it? I've read that throughout here and it's part of the condition. Do, is there a technical or a specific requirement that is a cluster?
There, there's no, there's no technical definition. I, my goal is to have them appear natural in, in terms of cluster. So I don't want like, you know, a pocket of three, a pocket of three, a pocket of three, because then it looks like it's planted. There is an existing natural grove of, of, of mature evergreen trees. And I, I want it to appear as if that has continued.
So that'll be, that'll be looked at as part of the review of the landscape plans at permit time?
Correct.
Okay. And then the last question, there's a comment in here, item number twenty-three that talks about the rockery walls for any kind of retaining. I, I'm assuming there will be some, but probably not. There's a definition here saying no standard concrete masonry unit, C M U block wall shall be permitted. Are you just talking about basic gray block? Or, I mean, because there are standard C M U units that have color and texture and everything else. Is this just the, the base light one-on-one gray?
That, gray or, or just the, the tan, just the flat. So that's, no, no split face or anything like that. However, the, the applicant is considering rockery and other different types of wall systems. But they, basically the intent of the hillside development standards is that they have to be decorative walls. They can't just be some ugly plain thing.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay. Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One question, going back to the bicycle lanes. If you indicated we're not going to add any more asphalt to widen those, I don't think you have room for that six feet on each side plus two lanes.
That, that's something we double checked. We do have enough room, given the street standards for the Public Works Design Manual, to add a bicycle lane to either side if necessary. I, I don't have the condition in front of me, but I believe we've only conditioned it to be on, along their frontage.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong from the police department. I have to stay six feet away from a bicyclist? Five feet?
Three. Coming from the cyclist.
Six is good.
Yeah, we prefer six.
Okay, thanks.
Jeff, I want to circle back real quick. And then I know Commissioner Johnson has a question to a point that Commissioner Marshall brought up earlier. And it was one that concerned me and particularly related to finding D for the general special use permits. And I'll just read that, you know, it talks about the proposal adequately mitigates traffic impacts of the projects. We've talked about traffic. Second part of it is providing a safe pedestrian environment. And I know that the applicant is doing a lot for enhancing, you know, conditions within the site, along Spectrum, bicycle connectivity, storage, all of that that relates to that safe pedestrian environment. But the one thing that does concern me still relates to what Commissioner Marshall alluded to with the transit stop and it being across the bridge. And it concerns me that if there is going to be a demand for transit, that that stop is going to draw people across that bridge in an unsafe pedestrian environment. So my question to you is, and I'm hoping to talk about this with the commissioners too, is how do we address that? And it seems like, I'm, I'm getting to my question. It seems like the most logical opportunity or, or response to that is to put a transit stop near this development. So my question is, one, what does it take with R T C to get a transit stop on an existing line for development? And if that's not an option, let's talk about some other options.
Yeah, I, I'm not really sure how to answer the R T C question. I know that it would take rerouting the line at, at that point. So I'm, I'm not sure what that would take. And I don't know if we have anybody from R T C here or if you would be able to answer that question. But I, I do have a suggestion on, on condition number thirty-four, which talks about the, the addition of the crosswalks. And of course, the applicant can jump in if I start stepping out of bounds here. But at least on the north side of the bridge, which is, if, if you go to the west side of three ninety-five, on the north side is where the, the transit location is. And so if you're providing the crosswalks and he can determine with N dot approval that a sidewalk can be added in, a minimum of four feet in width on the north side of that bridge.
Jeff, can you put up the site plan just so we can look at it?
How about I get the vicinity map? Because that could, yeah, that could. Highlight this a little bit better. So on this north side right here, there is, there is a shoulder, a wider shoulder there where a sidewalk could potentially be added. If the applicant works with N dot and gets N dot approval to add a sidewalk, it would be installed at the same time that those crosswalks and intersections would be installed. So we'd modify condition number thirty-four in order to require that sidewalk. If it's not possible, then alternative methods would have to be explored in order to bring pedestrians to that west side of the freeway.
So that, assuming that scenario plays out, that gets a pedestrian to the bridge, right?
Well, the pedestrian can get to the bridge with the way that the site is proposed now. It's, they can't cross it. So this would allow them to cross it by adding a sidewalk on the north side of the bridge and get to the transit station, which is on the north side of Par adjacent to the jail.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Marshall?
Thinking along those lines, I think, and I think what the discussion to date has shown is that there's probably different ways that are potent, that will potentially resolve the connectivity to transit issue. I do agree that we have to make a finding about the safety of, and whether or not drawing people across the bridge with no sidewalk is a, is a finding we can make. I was going to propose something, just offering this up, as something like that prior to issuance of C, of the C of O, the applicant shall demonstrate safe connectivity to public transit. I don't, I, I think that gets to the connectivity issue. I'm not certain if it solves all of your issues regarding, well, the closest transit stop is across a bridge. Are we drawing people by placing this here? Are we drawing people there? But, but I think framing it in the sense of providing connectivity allows the developer to figure out what's the best way of doing that. Is it getting a transit, R T C transit stop right there? Is it building a sidewalk? Is it providing a shuttle service? Not being prescriptive about how they do that. So that's, that's what I was going to offer up later on, if, if that helps any.
Yeah, that's a great approach. And I think that's a really, really good way to solve, you know, this. I mean, it's, it's a citing and design infrastructure dilemma that we're looking at here. Bridge and the transit location. So, you know, I think there are some interim steps that can be made with the hopes that, you know, down the line, we can get to the point where there is a transit stop there. So I appreciate that. And hopefully we can circle back with that on discussion. Commissioner Johnson, I'll turn it over to you.
Commissioner Johnson, just to, actually, this is a quick question for the applicant, Ken. I know there's a condition in here about disclosure statement in the lease package for the Regional Public Transit Center. Any opposition on your end to including language in that with respect to some of the noise that might be generated at the adjacent SPCA property?
None whatsoever.
Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Commissioners, additional questions? Discussion? Janelle, do you have a question?
Well, I crafted a condition that may help with the signal warrant. Question that Commissioner Johnson had. Or Marshall, sorry. Yeah. So prior to the approval of the first permit, the applicant shall complete the signal warrant analysis for the U S three ninety-five Par Boulevard ramps. If the signal warrants are met, the applicant shall construct and make the signal improvements fully operational prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Does that work? Does legal have any issues? Huh? This is going to be an additional com, condition. It will be added. Number thirty-seven.
Would it be better to replace thirty? Sorry, thirty-two?
Oh, replace thirty-two?
Somehow so that it's not, otherwise it might be inconsistent with the language you have in thirty-two? I think you guys can.
Oh, yeah. We can replace thirty-two.
I'm sorry?
We can replace thirty-two.
Okay. So that language that you have up there would be in replace, in place of condition thirty-two? Okay.
I want to make sure legal doesn't have any issues with my language. Matt? Greg?
No issues with replacing that language.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay. Commissioner Hawkins, discussion items?
Uh, yes. I need to ask. We're talking about changing that on thirty-two. If we don't put language in there for the roundabout, we're going to still have a problem because that is going to be the choke point.
What's our ability to? Maybe this is a question I'm not certain to who, but what's our ability to, to condition the project on improvements to the roundabout? Can we do that?
So, so if we do leave thirty-two, it, it still allows the ability to do a traffic update to potentially require additional improvements to allow for that level of service analysis. And if the roundabout is, is not sufficient, then there would be required to make those improvements. The applicant has already indicated that they're willing to make those improvements. So it, it, the condition number thirty-two existing, as it exists right now, would allow us to at least provide some justification to requiring those improvements. And then if we take this language and make it number thirty-seven, it just allows that added benefit to install those. Or we can revise condition number thirty-two a little bit.
I just want to make certain that Commissioner Hawkins' concerns are addressed with the underperformance of the current roundabout. That's what you're trying to get at, right?
That's correct.
Janelle Thomas for the record. And what I would say is that if we leave thirty-two in place, it does address the RIF reimbursement possibility. It also addresses the, the R T P options for performing projects that are on the R T P that may qualify. And that additional traffic study update to us will reveal that information when the final permits are submitted. Due to the fact that, and I would say that I would support leaving thirty-two as it is and then leaving, and then adding this as an additional comment or a condition. And going back to the condition that, that sets the timing for the project that between eighteen months and forty-two months, that will give staff that additional look at those sequential application points in time. So it could be useful to have that updated traffic information.
Okay. Thanks, Janelle. Commissioner Hawkins?
Mr. Crater. Are you going to be paying impact fees at R T C? And if so, can't you use some of that money for what we're talking about?
Yes. This project is obviously subject to the Regional Road Impact Fee Program. And we have identified that this intersection, the ramps and U S three ninety-five is on the capital improvement program. So this project will be eligible to basically take the cost of those signal improvements and use that to pay for a portion of our impact fees. In fact, one of the things that I brought up in discussion with staff that I think needs to be fixed is that right now, you have to pay the impact fees at a building permit, which means that we couldn't get credit. So we're hopeful to work with staff to be able to pay these impact fees at a C of O so we can get credit for that first phase. Because that's one more thing to keep the cost down on the project, keep rents more affordable.
Thank you.
I just want, as a point of discussion, to kick us off or, or continue our discussion. You know, I think it's worth noting and circling back to a point that Commissioner Johnson made in first starting questioning. And if I remember right, that question was, you know, essentially what would be allowed by right with this project? I mean, this project essentially fits within what we're looking for in this Dandini Regional Center and provides the type of, you know, housing and, and services and uses. And if it weren't, if it were a site in Iowa, that, I remember you saying that, a flat site and with no out, with no rock outcroppings aside from the drive-through use, it would essentially be, you know, a building permit. I, I think we've had some great discussion in terms of, you know, the way relates to its adjacent uses. And I think, and again, this is just my opinion, that architecture. that architecture and the design incorporates, you know, mitigation for those adjacent uses. We've got conditions in there to disclose to the residents that, you know, here's some of the things that are going on around you if you live here. It's got great connectivity within the site. The one thing that was the hang-up for me, and I mentioned it as a follow-up to Commissioner Marshall's questioning, was the transit and the connectivity. And I think that we're on a path to get there. I want to make sure that, for me, that we have, you know, a solid approach, whether it's a condition, whether it's some sort of design change or approach, that we make sure that that is a safe pedestrian environment because we have it within the site, we have it along the spectrum. But once a pedestrian leaves that site and starts heading towards that freeway, you know, that can get a little scary, I think, for that person. So I would just turn it over to the rest of the commission for thoughts on that. And I think we had some thoughts from staff and Commissioner Marshall on where to go with that. So Commissioner Marshall, if you wouldn't mind just kind of restating what your thoughts were and your wording, that'd be good.
I'm ready to make a motion if you'll entertain it.
Okay. There may be other discussions, so we'll...
I can make a motion, then we can...
Let's do that.
So I, forgive me, I'm a little new on this end of things. But our motion is...
And I would say that we have conditions 213, 15, 6. We had a change
Yeah.
in 32 and 37. So lots of things to keep in mind if you're going towards a motion.
Okay, so I was going to make a motion based upon compliance with applicable findings. I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions, including the prescribed amendments to conditions 2, 13, and a new condition 37, because I think we're leaving 32 as is. And a new condition to the effect of, prior to issuance of any CFO, the applicant shall demonstrate safe connectivity to public transit.
I believe we had a proposed amendment to condition 26 to add the disclosure about the SPCA facility.
Correct. And what counsel just said?
So your motion, Commissioner Marshall, incorporates the changes to conditions 2, 13, and 15 that we have here, right?
Correct. I thought I heard you mention there was edits to 6, is that not?
And 6 was Commissioner Johnson's architecture?
Commissioner Johnson, condition 6 is fine. It's per code. Condition 7, I would suggest one modification, which is the architecture. Do you want me to just add that language now? I just wanted to change the last sentence in there. Currently, it says all of these buildings should match materials, colors, roof pitches, and/or fenestration. I would prefer that to read that as a continuation of the sentence above, that the applicant shall demonstrate that the architecture is consistent with the architecture of the multifamily buildings in Exhibit C with respect to materials, colors, roof pitches, and/or fenestration. That gives a little more, from an architectural language standpoint, that gives a little bit more freedom to achieve what Jeff was looking for with respect to variety within the same context. So that was the language modification I was looking for there.
Commissioner Marshall, is that included in your motion?
That is.
Okay. And then 26 with the disclosure about the potential barking noise. And then 37, as proposed on the screen. And 38 with the transit connectivity. And if, could you read that one more time for me?
And I would love to hear from staff and from the applicant if this is, if this language is acceptable and gets us where we want to go. But prior to the issuance of any CFO, the applicant shall demonstrate safe connectivity to public transit.
I am absolutely fine with that.
Is that too easy? Should we be suspicious about that? Is there, no? Okay.
Okay, staff and the applicant are okay with that. We're going to have some safe pedestrians out there. So is that, that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Second? Do we have a second?
Commissioner Johnson, before, I will second that. I just want to include in the discussion, just at the beginning, there was a couple of items that I shared some concern on the findings with. I do want to specifically mention the point that was raised by Commissioner Hawkins with respect to the sewer. I was confused and had some concerns about making the finding on infrastructure until that was explained. So I am now able to make the findings with respect to infrastructure. And then I also shared some of the concerns on the traffic impacts. And I appreciate the efforts of the commission to clear those up. So with that, I will second the motion with all of the modifications to the conditions. And as stated, I can now make all of the findings.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion and a second? Additional discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Great discussion, commissioners. I appreciate that. And good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that will conclude our public hearing items for the evening. So we'll move down to Trekkie Meadows' regional planning liaison report. And I think being the only one here from sitting on the, oh, well, Commissioner Hawkins, you were there now. So we had a meeting last week. We... I honestly can't remember what we did at the meeting, Commissioner Hawkins. No, that's right. So we heard an item related, the City of Sparks, related to Energy Corridor in the East Trekkie River Canyon and a new substation out there. And I should say that the, we did also approve a couple RFQs or recommended to the Regional Planning Governing Board, a couple RFQs for work to initiate regional plan update and do a sustainability study. So those were approved, I believe, by the Regional Planning Governing Board. I'm just babbling.
We also talked about and voted unanimously on steamboat leaving the sphere of influence for the city of Reno.
Thank you, yes. That would actually be the most pertinent, I believe, to the city of Reno. Yeah, we did have that discussion. And the decision was to have staff go coordinate with the city of Reno and have a discussion on that related to the request to have the properties in the city of Reno's sphere of influence leave the sphere of influence. That's in Pleasant Valley, the very south end. Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins, for filling in all the gaps there. There were a lot of staff announcements, item eight.
All right, so first off tonight, I have the very distinct pleasure of introducing our new associate planner. Brooke Oswald comes to us from Utah. He is a registered landscape architect. He has a great background in the private sector. Has been doing most recently work in Salt Lake City. Also has a background in real estate development in terms of his master's degree. So we are just incredibly excited to have him on board. He started this Monday. And so we just want to welcome him and introduce him to you tonight.
Welcome. Feel free to come up and say hello. Yeah, please. We do that to all the new...
For the record, I'm Brooke Oswald. Yeah, I'm happy to be here. It's been an exciting, fast week, like Sienna said. I started on Monday. Already a number of cases on my desk. And so I'm excited to get started, excited, enjoyed exploring Reno and seeing the growth that's happening here and all the just real positive things that are happening. Had the opportunity this morning to listen to Sienna's, Sienna talk about the general master plan and have looked through that briefly and really excited about a lot of things that are included on that, especially the implementation plan. I think it's a brilliant part of that plan. So I'm open to questions, if you have questions for me or anything. More of who I am. Thank you. And...
Not yet, but I think as you've seen, we will have plenty as we move forward.
Yes.
I've got one thing to mention. Councilman or Councilwoman Dewar has a program called Relief and probably responsible for the tree growth and canopy around the city of Reno. So that's probably something that I'm always going to ask questions on. It's where can we get more canopy? So...
Yeah, wonderful. I had the opportunity to go to Ward Two last night and where was there. And she spoke of the trees and some of that. And I'm excited to hear more about the work that's been done. You know, she was working with the Rotary Club and a number of other things. Back in Salt Lake, I worked, was on the board of a nonprofit called The Green Urban Lunchbox. It was a gleaning nonprofit. We were working, started to work with the city and the urban forestry to connect not just the urban forestry and their tracking of trees. We were really interested in tracking what the program did was basically people could register their fruit tree. We would organize volunteers, go pick the fruit of that fruit tree. We'd go to the homeowner, volunteers, and then the rest went to hunger relief within the community. And so we had started intimately, and the city was very interested also in that. We term it as an urban orchard, which is another extension of that, that sort of canopy and urban forest. And then all the benefits that come with that. So that's something I'm passionate about and have studied quite a bit also.
Well, excellent. Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad you're here.
Yep.
And just another, a couple of quick announcements in terms of the city council, their last meeting on August 9th. We did have two ordinances adopted. The first of those, the cottages at Comstock in terms of that zoning map amendment. Also a text amendment for the noticing related to master plan adoption. So those are both approved at this point. Did want to note that for upcoming agendas, we have moved our initial thoughts on when the adult business ordinance would be considered. So that's no longer going to be on September 20th. So we'll be kind of filling that agenda with other planning cases and looking to reschedule that in the future. And that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, excellent. We will move on then to commissioners' suggestions for future agenda items. Commissioner Hawkins, I have a feeling I know what this is going to be.
And I've said it several times since. We still need that plan from, I can't remember her name.
Lynn Barker?
Lynn Barker as far as sustainability and all. It just kind of gets pushed away. I've been waiting for it for a year and a half.
Public comment? Is items for either public comment and any action item or for any general public comment? Here's your chance.
Isn't it a requirement in order to get you to sign the paper that they have to make public comment?
Yeah, and they have to, and it has to be all three minutes.
Yes, exactly. I'm pretty sure.
Well, thank you for sitting through our whole meeting this evening. Yeah, I hope it was good. Hope it was interesting. So with that, I'll ask for motion to adjourn. All right, a motion, have a second. All right, all those in favor? Good night. Thanks, everyone.
Today is amazing because we are kicking off the Virginia Lake Water Quality Solution. This is the first step. We are looking at improving water quality by circulating the water within the lake.
As we have water coming in and as we're able to get the full mixture along the whole lake, when we do have drought conditions, our water quality will start from a better condition than it is today. Right now, the water enters from the north and it exits the northeast. And basically, it short-circuits and the majority of the lake isn't getting the benefit of the water flow in and out.
And then the flange adapter, the backing ring, you could bolt to the wall.
If you have some dirty water, one way to fix it is to mix it with cleaner water, and it will be less dirty. It's kind of intuitive. That's really what we're doing here.